Good evening. At this time, I would like to call to order the March 7th, 2024 Stanley County Board of Education meeting. Welcome to those of you who are in attendance and to those of you watching live stream tonight. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County schools. At this time, I would ask Mr. Bill Swartensen for the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with grateful hearts and open minds. We ask that you guide us in our deliberations and celebrations with the children as our singular priority. We ask that you bless all of Stanley County's children with good health and safety, as well as their families. Lead our faculties and staffs to finish the school year with positive energy, love for the children, and dedication. In Jesus' name we pray.
Up first tonight on our agenda is recognitions. At this time, I would turn it over to Dr. Dennis for those.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First thing tonight, we would like to recognize our Stanley Stars. Dr. Carter?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Each month, Stanley County Schools is proud to recognize two classified and two certified employees through the Stanley Stars Award Program. The employees were nominated by their principals, who also shared a brief overview of why they were nominated. This month, we recognized the Stanley Stars at Locust Elementary School and North Stanley Middle School. These employees were surprised by a visit from Dr. Dennis and were given a $25 gift card sponsored by the Nehemiah Project. And we'd like to thank the Nehemiah Project for their donation of $1,500 to cover these recognitions. So Stanley Stars, as I call your name, please step forward with your principal. At Locust Elementary School, our Stanley Stars are Ms. Susan Yao, classified, and Ms. Wendy Tucker, certified. Principal Devron Fur wrote the following regarding Mrs. Yao. Mrs. Yao is our head custodian here at Locust. She goes above and beyond to keep the school clean and along with driving a regular bus route in order to keep our students safely to and from school. During the school day, she is always willing to help when needed. She does many additional duties around the school, including taking notes to and from the classrooms, helping administration with fire drills, as well as many other things. We are very lucky to have her at Locust Elementary. Our certified teacher is Ms. Wendy Tucker. And Mr. Fur wrote the following. Mrs. Tucker is a wonderful teacher who is driven, competitive, and loves students. She has taught for 29 years and has had a profound impact on students. Mrs. Tucker is a rare teacher at the elementary level and one of the best at teaching science and social studies. She has a knowledge and love of history that many teachers do not have. Her lessons are engaging, purposeful, and very well planned. This is her final year as an educator. Unfortunately, we have been unable to change her mind. She will be missed at Locust. Congratulations to our Stanley Stars at Locust Elementary School. At North Stanley Middle School, our Stanley Stars are Renda Udi, classified, and Ashley Ruston, our certified teacher. Principal Emily Fur could not be here tonight because of a prior family obligation, but she wrote the following regarding classified Ms. Udi. This is Mrs. Udi's 25th year in the Northern End, and she started the school year, like many others, as our EC assistant in our mild resource classroom, where she was highly involved in the teaching process. Since the fall, Mrs. Udi didn't hesitate to step into the teaching role, as we have been hiring for the teacher position, and she hasn't missed a beat. She has been instrumental in the success of the classroom through planning and teaching lessons for multiple grade levels and subjects, communicating with parents, and assisting students in their core classes. She has even been spotted chaperoning after-school dances. We love having Ms. Udi at North Stanley Middle School. And Principal Fur wrote the following regarding Ms. Ruston. As a second-year teacher, Mrs. Ruston made the jump from elementary school to middle school and hit the ground running in August. Not only does she coach multiple teams at North Stanley Middle School, she is also an advocate for her students and a rock star in the classroom. Mrs. Ruston incorporates small group instruction, differentiation, and engaging instructional techniques into her daily classroom activities. She collaborates with her colleagues across multiple grade levels and is a solution finder whenever possible. Students look forward to her class, where they know they will be both challenged and supported. Her energy and positivity are contagious. We are so very proud that she is part of the Comet team. Congratulations to our Stanley Stars at North Stanley Middle School.
We have a BT recognition. Ms. Rawls, go ahead.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Rawls, our BT coordinator, to share information regarding our Beginning Teacher of the Year.
If you guys will just wait right there, we'll get you all at one time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, chair board members and guests. The North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching Beginning Teacher of the Year process was developed to honor beginning teachers and to retain teachers who show promise as excellent leaders and teachers in the classroom and among charter schools as well. This year, Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year, Mr. Austin Herlocker, was among the 27 finalists selected from across the state. Mr. Herlocker, a second-grade teacher at East Emerald Elementary, attended a celebration and a week of teacher leadership at NCAT's Colawee Campus, February 12th through the 16th of 2024. Tonight, we are honored to recognize Mr. Herlocker and share in the sentiments expressed by NCAT in regards to these finalists. Each finalist has demonstrated an unwavering dedication to their practice and in a short period of time made a profound impact on their students, families, schools, and communities. So tonight, Mr. Herlocker, we thank you for your commitment to the students and families in Stanley County schools. Congratulations on being selected as part of this outstanding community of educators.
And board members, if you will join me in going down and congratulating our recognitions tonight.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is closed session. Now this time, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session for student matters, North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A6, student matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1, and attorney-client matters, North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A3.
Motion to go in closed session.
I have a motion and a second. On my favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session.
Open session and board members, I will need a motion to amend the agenda for us to go back into closed session later on this evening. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Up next we have the public comments section for tonight. We had no one sign up to speak tonight, so we are going to move on to the next part of our meeting. Up next we have the consent agenda and the approval of minutes from the February 6th regular Board of Education meeting and the February 6th 2024 work session minutes. Those have been available to board members via board docs and you've had time to review. I will now entertain a motion to accept those.
If we approve the minutes of the February 6th regular minute and the February 6th work session minutes.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Those have been approved. Next we have committee reports and I will start with facilities. Ms. Robyn Whitaker.
Facilities did have a meeting today and we discussed the bids for the Indy addition. I'm just gonna, I know you've probably all looked over those. We have our director of facility maintenance Keith Benton here that would be able to answer any questions that you might have concerning those bids.
Good evening. How are y'all tonight? Thank y'all for allowing me to come up here. Y'all seen the bid numbers and the bid tab of everything that come from the architects for Indy Elementary. Any questions, concerns? Sorry, I thought I heard something. Okay. Everybody good with that? So we suggest that we go with Hoss contracting to construct the addition for Indy Elementary.
I know that we had our meeting and we discussed this and why this committee is, it's also coming out of committee in recommendation of Hoss contracting. Will you just give the board a little background of your working with Hoss?
Yes ma'am. So Hoss contracting and I've worked with them multiple times over my years of doing additions at schools and remodels and stuff like that of sort. They have a really good portfolio for school construction. They do a lot of construction for Wingate University. They are their preferred contractor and there, you can go on their website and see a lot of the things that they've done. They're, they're, they're really good contractors, really responsive. They value what as an educational dollar we're looking for. And they are, they are here, they're there for us and to protect us and do their due diligence to the contract and to the design of the architects.
You talk about their portfolio. Are there any schools that we know that they've done any work with?
Yes, there's Monroe High School. They've done some work at it. Aquadale Elementary, they've done work there. They did the newer addition building that y'all have there. That was back some years ago, but they've, there's multiple of schools, but Aquadale is one they've done here in this county.
Mr. Benton?
Yes ma'am.
Will you go over with our board? I think, I think you have alluded to this, but how we determined the lowest responsive bid.
Right. So in, in determine the lowest responsive bid, you, you look at the lowest contractor. But responsive is you take in consideration some stuff that the architect might know about contractors of that, of that sort, you know, as far as their ability to complete on a timely fashion. Their abilities to not come back for submitting of change orders, which can run your general contract cost up pretty fast and pretty significant. And the con, the architects And the con, the, um, architects also agreed and that they would support in, um, using Hoss Contracting.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, Ms. Ritten, what, what portion of the, uh, bid would be with our local contractors here in Stanley County?
So, in, in the portion of your local contractors, I'll just name a few off. Uh, you have Moore's Grading that will do all of their site work. And then you also have, um, Garmin Electric, I mean Garmin, uh, which do plumbing, electric, and heating and air. So, they'll be handling a lot of their, um, heating and air needs for this project. Uh, TDR Plumbing is a somewhat of a local company, they're in the next county over. But as far as local to Stanley County, you've got Moore's and you have, uh, Garmin. Very reputable companies, um, in my opinion.
So, as Ms. Gibson said, this is a recommendation coming out of the Facilities Committee for us to approve the bid from Hoss Contracting for the ten Classroom Edition at Indy Elementary School.
So, since it's coming out of committee, I think I just need, um, I just need a vote. I don't have to have a second. Yes, how much was the difference in the bids?
They were generally pretty tight, the exact numbers. They were, um, this is one of the tightest bids that I've seen in a long time. But I believe that there was roughly sixty thousand dollars maybe difference in, in some of their numbers. Um, so that, it was pretty close. I hope that helps.
Yes, so, so how much is the number? What, what is the bid for the whole thing?
Well, what we're doing is we're looking at, um, the ten room. And, um, that's, we'd have to calculate that real quick.
So, Dr. Lefler, the, the committee considered, uh, I don't know if he can hear me or not.
Can you hear Dustin or Mr. Lisk?
Yes, yes.
Uh, the committee considered Hoss, Miles, and Stokes Construction, uh, among the others. But those were the sort of top three that we had narrowed down to. Uh, Hoss was at four point one oh nine million all-in. Uh, Miles was at, uh, just below that at four point zero nine nine. And Stokes Construction at four point one seven two. Uh, so there was a lot of consideration given to, um, local employees versus outside employees, um, to some of the experience that, uh, Mr. Benton had referenced and to, uh, his, um, engagement prior, uh, with Hoss and, um, uh, some of the schools that they have built prior. But it's very close, uh, between like Stokes, for example, and Hoss, well, sixty-three thousand dollars difference.
Did you hear that?
Yes, yes, okay.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. I guess, uh, all in favor for, um, approving Hoss Construction? Keep that. All right. Since we had a, it coming out of committee, we don't have to have a second. So, I had a motion, so I asked who all was in favor of Hoss Construction.
Hoss Contracting?
Yes.
For the Indy Elementary?
Oh, sorry, Hoss Contracting. Mm-hmm, for the Indy Elementary ten Classroom Edition. Mm, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you have, Ms. Whitaker? Okay, all right. Um, up next for committee reports, I have Finance and Mr. Lisk. Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Um, the Committee Finance Committee met, uh, last week on March the first. This is budget season, so we're typically, um, trying to gather what, um, uh, resources we might need to ask from the county commissioners. Uh, they'll vote, uh, sometime in the May-June timeframe on how they're gonna fund us, but they're in their strategic planning now. Last year, I believe, we received around sixteen million or so, uh, and we're trying to, um, determine what curriculum needs we can address, uh, such as CTE classes, uh, some of the advanced placement classes, um, how we can get more certified teachers in the classroom. The state doesn't pay for everything and the county has to pick up the tab, uh, and that's a, a big area. Uh, just to give some reference to the public, uh, the new rankings just came out. You can go to dpi.northcarolina.gov. Uh, we're ranked a hundred and fifth in local county funding, uh, out of a hundred and fifteen districts. Um, we've put twenty million dollars worth of profit as a county in the bank, uh, the last two years. Our sales tax revenue is up a hundred and sixty percent, our tax base is up fifty percent. Um, so, some other relevancy, Montgomery is a third of our size. Uh, one tax spending generates half of what our revenue tax spending generates. And they fund it fifty-two in the state, um, uh, from their county commissioners. And Anson County, I believe, was eighty-two or in the eighties and they're a tier-one county. So, um, we're gonna come up with a budget that we feel like, um, helps our teachers and helps our students. Um, it, uh, addresses the curriculum needs that we have. Um, I have a friend that goes to West Stanley High School and they take advanced placement classes. Uh, she has to go to three schools and two counties, and I find that that's ridiculous. Um, at Almaron High School in nineteen ninety-eight, I took three advanced placement classes in one building. So, um, not that everyone's on an academic route. This is why we're trying to address some of the CTE, uh, curriculum that's needed, uh, and so that all our schools have fair and equitable, equitable access to, uh, learning. Uh, but if we use something, uh, like Montgomery, uh, a smaller county as a reference, we're probably gonna be somewhere in the twenty million dollar ask range, uh, which would be north of two thousand dollars, uh, per pupil in funding. Right now, I believe the number is around sixteen hundred. Um, I'd have to go back and pull that, but it's public record, you can see it through the Department of Public Instruction. So, we're coming back next Thursday, uh, March the fourteenth, and our finance department should have, um, some of the additional requests that we made, um, so that we can begin our, our conversations with, with the county commissioners on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's instructional?
I don't have a report for this month, however, um, the Instructional Committee will be meeting. Let me remember, hope, I think it's the twelfth next week and we're meeting at twelve-thirty. Thank you.
Next up, I have Personnel, uh, Dr. Lefler. He said, now report. And I have Policy with Ms. Watson.
Uh, yes, ma'am, we have some policies for final approval. They are Policy thirteen-ten slash forty-oh-two, Parental Involvement. Policy thirty-two-ten, parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. Policy thirty-five-forty, comprehensive health educational program. Policy forty-three-thirty-five, criminal behavior. Possibly, Policy forty-seven-twenty, survey of students. Policy sixty-one-twenty, student health services. And Policy seventy-three-hundred, staff responsibilities. And then we also have, these were the two revised, uh, policies we will be approving on first reading. Policy thirteen-ten, forty-oh-two, parental involvement. And Policy thirty-five-forty, comprehensive health educational program.
So, Policies thirty-two-ten through seventy-three-hundred for final approval tonight? Okay, okay, all of them, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I had that right.
Um, I, I do have a question on that.
Okay.
For Policy, uh, thirteen-ten slash four thousand two, uh, and forty-seven-twenty, Section B. Uh, and then, and then thirteen-ten slash four thousand two, it's Section E-one. Um, it, it, I would like those pulled separately.
Okay.
Motion to pull those out separately.
All right. Um, so, you said thirteen-ten? And what was the other one that it was? Forty-seven-twenty? Okay.
Um, well, it's thirteen-ten slash four thousand two and, uh, forty-seven-twenty.
Okay, so, I will, um, I will entertain a motion to approve thirty-two, no, yeah, thirty-two-ten parental inspection, forty-three-thirty-five criminal behavior, sixty-one-twenty student health services, and seventy-three-hundred staff responsibilities. And thirty-five-forty comprehensive health education. For final approval.
I move we approve those policies.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that has passed. I will now entertain a motion to approve Policy thirteen-ten slash four thousand and two parental involvement. Did you want, did you want them pulled for, for? I thought you wanted them pulled out to vote on them separately, so maybe I didn't understand what you were asking me. Okay, okay, okay.
Yep, in, in discussion.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I did what you were asking.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve Policy thirteen-ten dash four zero zero two.
Yeah, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second. So, now we're in discussion.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, if you don't mind, I would just wanna read.
You're fine.
E-one, um, and for the public, this is part of the, uh, Parental Bill of Rights that the North Carolina Legislature, um, has created. And they require us to codify their own law and our own policy. Uh, this is part of the section, I'm gonna read two paragraphs. Before any student well-being questionnaire or health screening form is administered, administered to students in kindergarten through third grade, the principal or designee shall provide parents with a copy of the questionnaire or form and shall inform parents of the means for parents to consent to the use of the questionnaire or form for the children. Um, the reason I've asked for that paragraph within the policy to be pulled out is 'cause I don't understand why we stop consent at third grade. Um, I don't know why we can't add all of that through twelfth grade. Um, the policy we just approved, uh, uh, in thirty-five-forty was, was also written through third grade. Uh, but we were able to add, uh, that, um, uh, let me read this here. Uh, and I'm gonna read thirty-five-forty. And if I skip around, I apologize here, but, uh, Policy thirty-five-forty, as written in the law, as written in the North Carolina law that we have to codify, instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, or sexuality will not be included in the health education program in kindergarten through fourth grade. So, my question was, well, what happens after fourth grade? Because it also says under the law, uh, as required by law, in beginning in seventh grade, uh, reproductive health and safety education will include age-appropriate instruction on sexual abstinence until marriage, STDs in the human reproductive system, preventable risk for preterm birth and subsequent pregnancies, the effectiveness of contraceptive methods in preventing pregnancy, awareness of sexual assault and sexual abuse, and sex trafficking prevention and awareness. Um, sex ed's been taught in seventh grade, uh, and above for a long time. But we were able to add to this policy, in addition, there should be no classroom instruction on these same topics, which were gender identity, sexual activity, and sexuality, uh, in fifth through twelfth grade. So, it's not gonna be taught in our schools from kindergarten through twelfth grade, uh, outside the district's approved curriculum. So, I've asked for this policy and, uh, discussing with the attorneys, and we have a bit of a gray area under North Carolina law. Uh, because I am of the, uh, opinion, just one board member, that, uh, parents should be able to provide consent for their minor child through, through twelfth grade or till they're eighteen or emancipated. The other paragraph in thirteen-four thousand two slash four thousand two says, and I'm just gonna read, um, uh, one, one line of, of the paragraph, which I had a problem with. Uh, in addition, the principal or designee shall notify parents before any changes are made to the names or pronouns used for their children and school records or by school personnel. Again, this is, uh, only notification as required by the law. So, my questions were with, um, the attorney is, well, where's the consent? So, if the child wants to call themselves another name, what is the school system gonna do? And there seems to be a gray area legally with this. So, I, I had a problem with the North Carolina law. It's, and, and pushing it down, forcing the board to have to codify what the... That's like us saying that you gotta go thirty-five miles per hour out here. What's the law? You should abide by the law. It supersedes any policy that we create. Um, but I feel like that, 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 uh, if my child wanted to change, uh, my son or daughter wanted to change their name, well, they're a minor child. Uh, I'm responsible for them legally. Uh, that the school system should not, uh, abide by that, and they abide by what I say. So, I would like to see parental consent, but apparently, uh, it's been difficult with the, um, legal team in, uh, addressing Title IX issues. So, I find it very difficult that this, that we have to write this into the policy. This language is also, um, rewritten into, and I'm gonna finish, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the time, into Policy forty-seven-twenty, which is, uh, survey of students. And, uh, again, on the, um, well-being questionnaires under the survey for students, uh, we'll, um, only notify the parents. And where is it at? It's more of the notification of kindergarten through third grade, so it's repeating what's in thirteen slash four thousand two. I'm of the opinion, well, if we can change thirty-five-forty to say, no, it's, it's not gonna be taught, we're not teaching gender, uh, identity from kindergarten through twelfth grade, that if there are gonna be questionnaires given to my fourth-grade child, that I should be able to consent to that survey. Uh, so, I just wanted to provide some color to the public on why I asked for these to be pulled out.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other board member discussion on any of these?
I have something to...
Okay.
In lieu of what? Mr. Lisk has said, can these be, can this policy, Dr. Dennis, can it be tabled? Can it be tabled longer? Without, without, without approving tonight, can it be tabled longer?
Yes, we can table them, um, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change the fact that it came out of general statute, but we can table them for more discussion, yes.
I know it came out of, I know it came out of general statute and I, I understand that. Our lawyers have been contacted.
It's a gray area for them. And they're trying to figure out, because they're receiving these types of questions now that, if you public recall, this Parental Bill of Rights that came down in legislation, they, they've given the school systems in the state, uh, another year, I think, to implement this, but this is the sort of issues now that we're running into.
And we're not, we're not the only system that
Yep.
is tabling something like this. So, I guess this is why I'm asking Dr. Dennis.
There's nothing that you can't...
So, we can table it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we're not gonna get our hands slapped on it.
Well, what you look at too, this is codified in law. And like Dustin and I spoke about, I could say that any board member can drive sixty-five miles an hour down that road. It's posted thirty-five, but that law supersedes whatever policy you have.
Mm-hmm.
So, if the policy's not in place, it reverts back to general statute, if that makes sense. General statute's in place.
That's, that's sort of what I was alluding to, um, Ms. Gibson, is that the general statute is, is there and it exists until we implement our own policy.
It's just that general statute says you have to codify House Bill forty-nine into your policy.
So, Ms. Gibson, what I've asked you... So Ms. Gibson, what I've asked the attorney to do is provide us some color around that, because the legislature is forcing us as a board and all other hundred and fourteen boards to repeat their legislation, House Bill forty-nine, in our policy. Uh, to give us some color that I want to see parental consent. I mean, if, if we, if Dr. Dennis picks up and calls the phone to Mr. or Mrs. parent and says, how, you know, hello, your, your child has wished to change your name to this name, and the parent says, um, no, I am the legal guardian, and that's a minor child, you shall not do that, then I want to see we enact what that parent requests. And vice versa. If that's, they want a name change, then we do parent consent, because I find it, I think the term is an oxymoron, I could be wrong, that it's a parent bill of rights, but we don't give them a right.
Right. Well, I agree with what you're saying personally, knowing that we have a work session coming up. I would love to just table this one and have some more discussion, and in the meantime, can we contact our lawyer again, or even have our lawyer on the phone as we discuss this in our work session with every board member?
He knows I'm going to get back to him on this. That's the way.
Well, then I would like to table it.
So I have a.
Second, that motion.
I was going to say, I have a motion to table, so I have a, I figured you were going to give me a second. I have a second. Um, so all in favor for tabling, um, thir- thirteen ten and forty-seven twenty? All, any opposed? We just said, ah. Okay, so we will table those and. Okay. Yeah, I got you. Sorry, y'all. Dr. Lefler's on the phone. He had a, he had a medical thing in his family today, so, um, uh, we will table that until the, um, March eighteenth work session and have some discussion on that. Thank you. Ms. Watson, do we get everything covered for you? Okay, thank you. Um, I have safety and security, Mr. Sorenson.
A no report at this time.
Up next, I have, uh, curriculum and instruction, Mr. Lynn Plummer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, tonight in front of you, I bring to you, looking ahead, two months down the road, looking at our testing plan for our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. This is really not much different than what we normally see, what we're normally looking at. Mr. Hatley has worked hard to work with principals and provide the most conducive testing schedule that will help get our kids on track and get the best bang for our buck in the state's allotted time for what we have for testing. The one thing I do want to draw your attention to is May twenty-third and May twenty-fourth. The state gives us the opportunity to allow some students to be re-administered their end-of-grade tests and of-course tests to help on the proficiency side. And there have been times in the past we have opted not to participate in that, but we feel like we need to do our students' justice, our teachers' justice, for what they've put into school this year, and we want to provide that for our students. What this means is, by state guidelines, we have to have a day outside of the instructional school calendar, so it has to happen beyond the last day of school, May twenty-second, to have a day of remediation. That doesn't mean students cannot have remediation during that testing window, after tests are done in the morning. They can remediate in the afternoon. They can remediate on days that testing is not happening. But they have to have at least one day of testing, um, remediation outside of that window. So we have placed that on that day following the last day of school, Thursday, May twenty-third. That would then give us the ability on Friday, May twenty-fourth, for that EOG, EOC retest to take place and happen for all of our grade spans. Um, so what I need from you tonight is the approval for us to move forward and have our remediation set for Thursday, May twenty-third, have our testing readministration on Friday, May twenty-fourth.
I have a concern.
Yes.
Have a question. So, and our students, um, will be required to come back and, and to retest again, or?
So number one, no, we cannot, we do not require them to. We have the, the opportunity for them to do that. Principals are going to work with teachers and work with students, especially looking at those that are just on the brink of hitting that proficiency, that another passage, another question, a couple more questions, could really put them over that bump to get to that proficient level and be able to show that. A lot of it's going to rely on having staff who are able to accommodate and be able to have the testing groups and make that happen on those days. Ms. Mayberry is working with us with child nutrition to be able to serve meals on those days. Mr. Lambert's working with us to be able to provide transportation on those days, to have as many students as we can, but no, it is not a requirement.
So we're going to really encourage them?
Correct, correct. Mr. Hatley and I spoke, have spoke with principals this week, and what we are wanting to happen is, yes, there will be a formal process and letter that goes home to parents, but really encouraging teachers to have those conversations with parents for why we are offering this, what this can do to not only help the school, but also help the student in the end.
Okay, may I ask this then? Because that's getting into the, um, Memorial Day holiday, that Friday. If, if students were able to go through remediation as much as they could on that Thursday, May the twenty-third, is there a way that they could be given on that Thursday evening? Uh, they cannot, they cannot be given the test.
It has to be two separate. Remediation has to be one day, testing has to be another day.
Yeah, I hate that it's, you know, kind of falling here with that holiday, but we will encourage them.
Well, and, uh, the good thing is, it's not a full day of testing. The remediation will be more of a full day. Testing, de- depending on how long a student takes within that individual test, it, it wouldn't take them more. Um, we have testing limits that are set, that they would not go all into the afternoon that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if there are no more discussion or questions, um, Mr. Plummer is seeking approval for the May twenty-third summer remediation day and then May twenty-fourth, the summer testing day.
I move to approve the summer testing schedule as been presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, I have auxiliary services, Mr. Terry Dunne.
Uh, in your packet, excuse me, um, you have the audit contract for the twenty-three twenty-four school year as well as the engagement letter. Um, there will be no, uh, increase or decrease in the contract from what it was the previous two years. Um, uh, at this time, I would like for the board, uh, to entertain a motion to, uh, approve the engagement letter, um, stating what they will, the auditors will be doing as during, for the audit of twenty-three twenty-four, as well as the audit contract in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Board members, Mr. Dunne is asking for a motion for the audit contract and for the engagement letter.
I move that we approve the audit contract and the engagement letter, um, as has been presented with your recommendations.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Dunne, just, just, uh, so for the public on these audits, can you explain the parameters that you're sort of going, I mean, I've read through the contract, and it's basically to ensure compliance, an independent auditor comes in and ensures compliance of the federal, uh, and state grants.
Yeah. Every year, the general statute requires the all, um, local educational, um, uh, uh, associations or institutions to be audited from an external auditor firm, uh, at the, uh, at the approval of a local school board. Uh, so that, this is where they will go in, look at our books, um, make sure that we're in compliance with our state and federal guidelines, as well as we're in compliance with the budget guidelines that's been approved by the board, um, and that we're, um, well, um, pretty much, uh, adhering to what's required to stay abreast as a, as a school system without being, um, pulled back into, um, coverage by the, uh, local government commission.
And I think for the contract, they also address the financial health of the system.
Yes.
Um, any weaknesses, material weaknesses that they, they identify.
There will be determined a fund balance, um, that, um, that we will increase or decrease of fund balance uh, in our local and capital lay, as well as, uh, child nutrition, uh, for net position, as well as our special revenue funds. Uh, and then of, uh, there will be, uh, if any findings, it will be generated in the audit report of what findings there would be, um, found in the audit.
Mr. Dunne, I would like to say one more time that, um, I'll go back to when the auditor was here and made the presentation. I just, I want to applaud you and your team, okay, people, um, as well as even, um, you know, Mr. Lisk with the finance committee, but, um, having clean audit reports, um, that means a lot. And, and I, I, I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
There's no other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That has passed.
Thank you.
And I think you have one more thing?
Uh, yes, um, if I can ask, uh, Mr. Keith Benton to come up front, please. Um, you have in your packet the bid documents, um, for the North Stanley High School bleacher, um, um, replacement. Um, so I'll have him to sort of, um, be here to address any, um, uh, questions that you may have. Um, we, um, if you'll see the bid document that you have, you'll see that, um, um, that Stokes Construction, um, is our lowest bidder for this project. Um, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask, um, uh, Mr. Keith Benton.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Benton?
Board members, this was also discussed in the, um, facilities committee that we just, uh, meeting that we just had. And, um, I would like for you to go over, Mr. Benton, the foundational part, and that bleacher vendor of, of Mastercraft, and I believe we have a school system, a school here that we are using the same thing.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Um, so the, uh, Stokes contract, in their contract will be the concrete slab that the, uh, bleacher section will be, uh, constructed on top of. So assuring it's stable and has a good foundation. And at this time, um, I believe South Stanley High School has the Mastercraft, um, structure of bleachers installed currently right now.
For those of you that may not have attended any football games this past year that took place at North Stanley High School, the reason we are replacing those bleachers is because those ble- bleachers were condemned, and we were not able to use those this past year during any of our sporting events that were held there. So they brought in temporary bleachers for the visitor's side, for them to be able to use. So, um, we are glad that we're able to get this taken care of.
And what happened, there was an issue with them, and that triggered, them being so old, a safety component, uh, that would, they would not pass, even if we got those things fixed. When that safety component was brought into play, and there was no way to fix it, because you would have to add all this metal. It was the, it was the gap between the seat and what went underneath the bleacher.
Correct. Yeah, in that old-style bleachers, the biggest concern was, was, uh, young person's, uh, safety as far as falling in between the actual seating section and the footrest. Um, so at the time that, that was brought to light to us, um, and their concerns, and, and the, the actual foundation that some of the bleachers were sitting on, we, we felt best to, to shut the bleachers off and bring in temporary seating. But, uh, now we can replace it with good seating. And this will, the contract, uh, is awarded to the contractors. The completion date is submitted on there for the au- off of the architectural drawings of August first. So that is their contract date that they are targeting to hit, and, um, that, there should accomplish that very easily.
If I recall, Mr. Benton, there was also some ADA issues that were with those bleachers.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, if, just to, and like what Madam Chair is speaking about, is the ramp section going up to the side, uh, really didn't meet ADA standards for, for the elevated level it was and the amount of angle. Um, also, it was a graded system that if, if, uh, somebody walked through with, um, heels on or, or shoes that, that weren't good quality, they could slip between the, the grate system.
All right, um, I will now entertain a motion to approve for the bleacher renovation, repair.
I'll move to approve Stokes Construction.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This is passed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benton and Mr. Dunne. Up next, we have superintendent comment.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to clarify one thing. I don't think I, I clarified it well. Um, Ms. Gibson, when you were asking about tabling, you know, since that policy isn't there, and the old policy's sitting there, which does not have a lot of protections that the, uh, House Bill forty-nine has in it, we're still operating like that is the law, and that's how we operate when it comes to all the other stuff while you, you guys iron it out, like surveys or whatever else it may be. So we're still operating under that, so we're, so we don't run afoul of the law. I just want to make sure under that while the board decides how they want to handle that nuance that Mr. Lisk, uh, spoke about earlier. Um, so, unless you tell me different. So, uh, Maintenance Appreciation Day was March first. Uh, Keith, uh, you and your team do an outstanding job, and, uh, I would like to recognize them. Um, I'm sorry I was out of town that day, um, with a professional opportunity, or I would have stopped by, and I still will stop by when I get an opportunity, because y'all do a great job. Thank you and your crew for everything you do. Uh, Read Across America Day was March second. Um, uh, I was able to read, to do some reading. I know some board members were able to do some reading. I know you guys will talk about your own experiences here, but it's one of my favorite things to do, is to go in and read the book and ask the kids questions, and, you know, and they like to have visitors. They like, you know, they like it when you come in and talk to them, and, you know, who are you? They thought I was in the FBI because I was wearing a suit, so. I, I didn't want to be classified as that, but that's what they thought I was. Oh, and one kid thought I was the, well, he thought I was, uh, somebody else, but it was funny. But I, I, I loved the, uh, getting out there and the, with the kids, and I want to thank, um, I know, uh, Mr. Fur and Locust invited me, and I read there the other day, and, um, read the sour grape, learned a lot about not holding grudges, and, uh, highly recommended. National School Social Worker Week is March, uh, third through the ninth, and School Breakfast Week was also the fourth through the eighth. Uh, this month is Music in Our Schools and Women's History Month. Um, don't forget, we have spring break, March twenty-ninth through April fifth. Um, this week, uh, I don't, I think, yeah, I, okay, I got that, um. A professional day on three-eleven, which is a, a workday for teachers. We have a sheltered professional day on the twelfth, which is next Tuesday. Um, we also have a career fair on the sixteenth. That's Locust Elementary from ten AM to one PM. If anybody out there has anybody know, would like to be, or is interested in a job with Stanley County Schools, uh, please attend. Uh, there will be someone from both classified and certified and, uh, all the other schools there. And, uh, we have daylight savings time coming up, uh, this weekend. Uh, one more thing, uh, I would like to, uh, recognize is today we have, uh, Troop Two-O-Two from Locust, uh, in the building coming to, um, our board meeting. I know it's, it's part of some things you guys do. And, uh, Darren Honeycutt's our troop leader, and, uh, would you guys like to say anything real quick about, you know, why you're here, your mission, or anything? Don't mean to put you on the spot. I just want to give you the opportunity. Thank you.
They did Patrick here. He would be happy to speak.
Yeah, I didn't see Patrick. But great to have you guys here. I know it's not, not the most exciting thing in the world, but believe it or not, it's a necessity when it comes to a lot of things we have to do when it comes to law. So glad you guys could attend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Right, up next I have board member comment. I'm going to start down here with Mr. Lisk.
All right, well, Dr. Dennis stole my thunder.
Sorry.
Thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all for coming, um, there, I think the uh, Aaron just mentioned four schools, West Stanley Middle School, West Stanley High School, South Stanley Middle School, and North Stanley High School are all represented in your troop. And Greystone, so I hear this is one of the better troops uh, for the, all the activities that you do. Uh, but they, they're working on a project, I believe, and I can't remember all the specifics, but you had to attend a council meeting or a board meeting, uh, find an issue, which I hopefully you got a couple good issues t- today to, to write about, and I believe uh, Patrick told me that they were working towards their merit badge. Is that correct? Citizenship, okay, so, so after standing at the polls all week and watching only twenty percent of our voters vote, uh, I think this is a good thing to understand how the civics of, of, of local government works, so, so thank you for coming. Uh, and as Dr. Dennis mentioned, uh, we all have been reading to the schools, no one, no one can compete with Mrs. Gibson. Um, I just don't even try, uh, it's like an amateur and a professional baseball player. I would like to add some hair though, if I can figure out a good wig uh, to wear, that, that would be.
I had a hat today, I can let you borrow it.
Oh, yeah. Um, I want to thank the uh, county commissioners for coming, I see Mr. Keen back there, uh, Mr. Billy Mills was just elected, so thank you for attending. Um, um, I know we've, we've got a lot to discuss on the finances and uh, hopefully that'll be a positive engagement uh, as we move forward, thank you.
Thank you, I have a hat, you can borrow, your wife saw me in my hat today.
Long collection of hats.
Ms. Watson.
Alright, thank you guys for coming, it's nice to have you here, um, I would like to, um, all of our people that were, our awards, um, we, we have some nice, very good people in our system, they work really hard. So, I guess that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, I had prepared comments, but seeing all those uniforms out there kind of tripped me up, so I'm going to step off a little bit. Uh, Silver Palm Eagle sitting up here, and one of the best, most uh, rewarding things in my life was the Boy Scouts, and it took a kid that needed a lot of direction and gave him direction, so I applaud you guys for being here, so get your eagle badge, work up, work up, work up. Uh, I did go to East Albemore and read to the first graders, and uh, it was a very difficult day for me. It was, you know, dealing with those kids is like, it feeds my heart, it feeds my soul. We had a uh, pet that I've had for twelve years die that day, so it was a very difficult day for me, but when things, when bad things happen, we go forward, okay, we keep doing what we need to do. Something I have to address is Stanley County funding our schools a hundred and fifth out of a hundred and fifteen school systems is unacceptable. It's unsatisfactory, it's unacceptable, and it's an indictment of not only our county commissioners, it's an indictment of our citizens because we put those people in position. What I'm here to tell you is, as someone that taught for twenty-eight years, it's a lack of love that puts, puts kids on the wrong track. It's a lack of love in a house that leads to substance abuse, isolation, hunger, uh, untreated illness, and kids just basically learn, you know, falling off track. We need a society, we need a county that has enough love for our kids to properly fund our schools. And I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, the status quo in Stanley has got to go, the status quo has got to go, so. I don't want to get all, you know, huff and puff, you guys messed me up, I had prepared comments, but seriously, they, do, do what you're doing, and thank you. Don't have words to uh, share my appreciation to our award winners, but uh, it's, it's like we're in a, we're in a battle in society, this, our American culture is in a battle right now between what we could be, what we should be, and what we're becoming, and properly funding our schools, supporting Boy Scouts, supporting our churches. Those things are part of the right track that we're falling off of, so that's all I got, and I don't want to get mad with them, them fellers out there.
Dr. Leffler?
Also, reading this week, uh, Read Loud America was great, I did uh, Stanfield and uh, Central Elementary School, and both of them were great, I read uh, Green Eggs and Ham, which was great, and also it's just wonderful to see the joy on the children's face when they have adults and they're actually interacting with them. And I, I must admit, in, in both classes, the students were so well behaved and listening and asked questions. I was reading the third graders and, and the way they acted, you would think they were sixth graders, it, it was really good. I think all of our staff in our elementary schools and schools in general are doing an excellent job. Also, talking about our schools in general, all, all we basically hear a lot of times is the bad things. For all these Facebook followers, who I am not, you, you need to get in, on, on Facebook and type in all your favorite schools in the county. Type in the website for that school and you will actually see the many good things that are going on in our schools, and it'll be refreshing. And also for the policies uh, tonight that, that were reviewed very nicely by uh, Mr. Liz, our legislature waves their flags like they're really protecting our citizens and our students, and in fact, a lot of their laws are not, a- and it's good that people read them carefully and that like our poli- policies that we can modify to make them better. Have a great spring as it's on us, and we will all enjoy it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson?
Um, certainly I want to congratulate our Stanley Stars and the beginning teacher, um, Austin Herlocker, and his time that was spent in, in CAT. Also, um, I want to say to Mr. Benton and his whole team, um, we have a wonderful maintenance department and we appreciate you, uh, Mr. Benton, and our social workers as, as well. Read Across America, World Read Loud Day, um, that's just when I can get back into my element, and um, so I love being the Lorax. And I can say that when I was reading um, this week at, um, or yesterday, I guess, at Central, um, you might know we have the tornado drill. And I had a little girl that, um, once she, she was walking out and she said, "Are you, are you going to stay? Will you finish your book?" And I'm like, "Yes, I'm going, I'm going to finish the book," but like, um, Dr. Leffler said, the children are, are just so intrigued, so polite and nice and appreciative of, of us coming in, and I do say, um, to all of our, our teachers and staff, administrators, what, what a wonderful job, um, they are doing, and to our administrators that are here tonight, um, thank you. It's always wonderful to see you, and our county commissioners, thank you, um, for being here. I would like to say to the Boy Scout troop, um, Ms. Poplin, if we could, at the end, I would like for these young gentlemen to come, come around here, maybe we can shake their hand and hear them introduce themselves, because they've sat here through a meeting. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure it's, you know, it's what they wanted to do, but um, and Mr. Darren Honeycutt is, um, was raised by me partly, so um, anyway, I, I claim him. But I'm so, I'm so glad that y'all are here and that you're working toward your merit badge, and best of luck with that, thank you.
We'll do that, Ms. Gibson, uh, Ms. Whitaker?
It's been many, many years since our school system has either done uh, an addition, a renovation, or built a new school. Um, I don't think that's been done since I was on the board last time, and I came off in twenty-ten. So it's excited to, yeah, I'm very excited to see that happening and um, for those new classrooms to take shape out of Andy, and um, Mr. Benton, thank you for the work that, that you've done for that, uh, we really appreciate that. I also had an opportunity last week to go to South Stanley High School, and I, they actually had a walk-off where they cooked in walks, and the CTE classes from each of the high schools had a competition uh, against each other, and North Stanley High School actually won that, we had an opportunity to sample and taste all of the food that they cooked, so it was, it was really good lunch that day, so I really enjoyed that. Also, I want to congratulate our Stanley Stars, um, one thing that I noticed when we talked about Ms. Yal from Locust, who is actually a custodian, she also is driving a bus for us, and anytime we can get somebody to do a dual jobs like that, especially when there is a bus driver shortage, I am very appreciative of that, so I just wanted to thank her for doing that. Um, and also for our administrators are here and our central office staff, I know you guys have a long day, and we appreciate you coming and taking the time to sit through our meetings, sometimes they're not too interested and sometimes they are, so, um, but we appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, um, I want to start off with, um, a thank you to our county commissioners for the funding for the addition on behalf of the board, uh, Andy, because that wouldn't have been possible without that, um, so appreciate that, and if you guys will pass that along to the rest of them, that would be great. Also, we want to uh, touch on, um, being able to read some this week, uh, I was able to read at Stanfield and Locust, East and Central, and I will be at Norwood first thing in the morning tomorrow. It's been an interesting week in the elementary schools, they've had, um, their Dr. Sees seem weak all week, and when you have Wacky Tacky Day on the same day as Picture Day, and on the same day as the tornado drill, and guest readers, I'm really not sure how teachers keep kids kind of reeled in, but I have to say, um, today at Locust, Ms. Tucker, when I walked in her room, those kids were attentive, and um, just, our teachers just do an amazing job, and uh, when you have all those things thrown at you on top of, um, you know, added things that the kids obviously love and enjoy, it really goes to show how hard, um, they work at classroom management and keeping, you know, their kids on schedule and everything, so we just really appreciate all the work that goes into that. It's also uh, Developmental Disability Awareness Month, and so uh, just wanted to kind of highlight that, and um, because that ha- holds a special place in my heart, um, and Mr. Herlocker, uh, congrats to him and to all of our Stanley Stars that got recognized tonight. And I, I also want to say, um, thank you to the Boy Scout troop for standing out here today, and I'm working on your citizenship and community uh, badge, I think that's, I think that's what you called it, Darren. I was a Girl Scout for many, many years, uh, so um, that kind of brought back some memories for me tonight, seeing you guys sitting out there, so um, just appreciate you hanging in here with us for the meeting, and we will uh, come down and uh, greet you guys in just a few minutes, so thank you. Up next I have the Personnel Agenda Report, uh, Dr. Carter?
Madam Chair and board members, um, if I may call your attention to the Personnel Agenda, Section One is, is for your information only, and Section Two does require your action, so at this time I'm requesting your consideration for approval.
Move to approve Section Two of the Personnel Agenda.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This has been approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the date and time of our next board meeting will be Wednesday, April twen- April tenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the Jean McIntyre Room at six fifteen. So just note the date, uh, due to spring break will be Wednesday, April tenth. And at this time, we are going to um, first go down and uh, gre- greet our um, guests, and then we will uh, go back from recess and back in. So once we go down and greet these folks, we'll go back into closed session and finish up what we started earlier, thank you.
I went up, told them all, thank you, Chris. We've been through this with two boys, a lot of these people were tough, like one man.
But his, his dad is a Good Will Scout, and then, he's a Grayskull, so his dad is a Navy Scout, and then his uncle's a Navy Scout. In fact, his dad is at a leaders meeting tonight.
Oh, gotcha.
Hey, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Thanks for being specific, too.
Oh, yeah. Possibly a mayor's bill of rights, either pairs, I can see that, either way.
We're teachers at CMS, both of us, so we're like.
Oh, you see a lot more crazy.
Our board meetings make this the best.
I've heard that. We live here in Stanley County. Especially just staying out with the kids and the big ones. We voted yes.
There you go. Thank y'all very much.
Thanks for sticking that course.
Thank you for the support.
Yeah, absolutely. Hands in the pockets. Come on guys.
Remember that duck was always one? There's always one. You ready bud? We'll see you later.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
And if there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.